All right, this is 5:15. I will call a meeting to order. Jane, you want to do roll call of all these full chairs up here today?
Yes, Shaven.
Present.
Kroger.
Here.
Beelenberg.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lindberg.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Thank you.
And then we are going to amend, Jane, we're amending the budget, reminding the agenda tonight.
Yes, we'd recommend amending agenda on consent agenda, give us more time based upon some suggestions on the police training policy, so.
To e out then.
Would to recommend to amend that and moving e. Yes, please.
All right. Our motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson. Heard something were here too.
Oh.
Did you say something?
They be able to.
Oh, second by Kyle Lindberg, man, so.
Okay, roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's just like training by fire. You know we told you what to do. You just listen to the next person. Good thing you have the first one.
I like being in the middle.
Okay, it's good. Keep it up. All right, next up is the consent agenda. This is all done with one motion and one vote. We have the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 council meeting. Claims list, 1274, the amount of $87,297.21. I think we all got, actually put out some of the larger amounts, if I look at that.
Very thankful for that.
Yep. Expenditure and revenue reports for the month of August 2022, and police statistical report for the month of August 2022. Any questions, your concerns, anybody any of that? Your motion for that? Consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have businesses review, final plans, and specs for the Exchange Street Stream Bank Improvements Project. Guess what's in the packet? Is that the 72 pager?
That was 72 pager. There are paper copies up here on the conference table. Jeff Godwin from Snyder and Associates was unable to be here due to a conflict with another meeting this evening. The public hearing, which will be set with the next resolution, will be two weeks from tonight. This is for the improvement, which we've previously reviewed on the stream bank east of Exchange Street, to straighten out the channel, remove debris that really has created further erosion on the stream banks. This pretty little diagram here, if you can, the main highlights here is there are three main areas, A, B, and C, that if you look at the cutouts where we're either adding or removing stream bank area, and then stabilizing four foot up each side. And if you follow the kind of the red snake here, and then the red snake, that's the best way I can explain it, that'll be all new revetment, classy revetment, or riprap, that will then straighten that channel before mitigating further erosion of the stream banks.
This is all on the east side of that bridge, right?
All the east, yeah, between the two homes, primarily between the two homes, the north and south. Correct. And this would allow it to be sent out for bid, we posted, noted in all the plan documents. And for the republic input, we would do it two weeks from tonight. And again, you receive electronic copies of all this, and other paper copies available for you as well. If you would like to do this.
Some motion for that one?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Next up is then Resolution Number 2506, authorizing the bid letting and setting the public hearing date of October 4th, 2022 at 5:15 PM for the Exchange Street Stream Bank Improvements Project.
Comments that I'll make on that is the bids are due at 3 PM that day, as noted here, and we'll do a public bid opening at 3 o'clock, and then at 5:15, we'll report on those bids, and hopefully have a recommendation of the board based upon that, and our engineer consultant will be here with us for that bid opening as well as tabulating results.
Motion for 2506.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Then we need to receive and file the minutes for the park and rec meeting, 9:13 of 2022. Do we need a motion first for that, Jane?
To raise him by.
Jane.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now that meeting, we need to review your recommendation to prohibit semi tractor trailer parking in city parks.
Just because, and they want you to take it home.
As noted in the four minutes, we've had, just give a 30,000-foot view, parking tractor trailers, there aren't any public spots in town to do so. It definitely is a challenge. Our public parks, we've had repeated uses down it, primarily down at Little George, and having larger vehicles and heavier weights going in and out of there, not only is further stress on the entrances down there, but also with soft spots after rains, it's not designed for that heavy traffic, nor from an aesthetic nor enjoyment factor anywhere in our city parks. The, after a study and discussion with the Parks Commission, the suggestion or consensus was to have us look at our code. We do specify within ordinance, code on the books, all the no parking areas in town. So for example, a number of years ago, within the last five or six years ago, was looked at for the Veterans Auditorium. So that's where there's signage parked there for event parking only. That was adopted into our no parking code. This is what would, with your support, and would, from this meeting, direct us to actually bring back an ordinance to you that would be, we would publish that for an ordinance change, allow up to three hearings. That's the background on the recommendation.
Any other questions or, is your motion to?
And make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Beelenberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
So we all need to sign that one, give that to RJ then, since that's his first one?
Yeah. Down refrigerator.
Mark that one down.
Fourth one, too.
Next up is review consensus to pay $1,250 towards softball, baseball, warning track, and assist with the installation.
This is done at our J.D. Jackson complex with our, with the agreement between the schools and the city. It clearly indicates the maintenance areas and responsibilities that we memorialized out here a few years ago. Very helpful to have that placed. Within that document, it does specify that any improvements, which this would be an improvement, would need to be through the consensus and agreement of the two entities. This isn't a large amount of dollars. We, it is dollars within the maintenance budget. The reason it's before you as a governing board is to be in compliance for any improvement in that area. And it's for the baseball and softball warning tracks. A warning track, if you're not familiar with baseball and softball, it's in the outfield areas, generally a 10 to 12-foot width, that changes from grass surface to a, in this case, it's usually a topsoil and/or cinder surface, and it's primarily a safety warning device that anyone going for foul ball, they know that they're soon approaching, it's almost like a rumble strips.
Yeah.
Towards the stop sign, right? The warning, there's already a warning track on the baseball field, that does need more cinder or top dressing, and then this would be the, just the removal and installation of the material on the softball field. The overall cost of material is approximately $8,500, and the school will be responsible for everything above the $1,250.
So are we doing that then, Jane?
Yeah, we will lead and do most of the.
The labor part of it then?
The labor part of it. There will be, I'm sure, some assistance with either the school or volunteers. So. It has been looked at, I know it's been, it was tossed around the last couple of years with the improvements down there, and with the new fence, I think it was saying, okay, it's probably time to put the safety warning crack in. It's been an interest of the school, I know the last two years. Still working with the school, and I've got excellent pricing and delivered costs, and this is what the school is willing to, we see why that's why it's coming back to you as the governing board.
Will they do that yet, this fall, or is that in next spring?
That's the intent, yes.
This fall?
Pretty small cost to minimize injury, because you can do some pretty significant damage by fence at running speed.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Beelenberg.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review the parade permit for Harley to meet a high school homecoming on Friday, September 30th, 2022. It's kind of went back to the same route, right? Let's go back to?
I was confused by the.
They've shared with a few of you before, I've shared before, that the school was evaluating changing the homecoming route. After further discussion evaluation from the school, that is not happening. So this was in your packet, and it is the same homecoming route as it's been for the last number of years. So staging area over here in Torkelson, up around the square, and this would be the Friday homecoming on the 30th.
Motion for that one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review the street closing permit for downtown tiny lawn race car show on Saturday, September 24th, 2022.
Yeah, our cones and barricades getting some good exercise here. This was in your packet as well. This is in conjunction with the tiny lawn weekend, which is going on this Friday and Saturday, and it's from 8:30 to noon is the request of the south and east sides of the square to showcase stock cars, because their race is Friday night, race is Saturday. I have been told that Pizza Ranch will be hosting a breakfast all morning as well. Not only the race fans and racers themselves, but also any community members, spectators can come uptown, mail around, and they've been directed and spoken with business owners on those sides of the square. It's, has the look and feel of a roar in the harlot in the morning, on a Saturday morning versus a Thursday night. And anytime we do these, in general, we'll come to you and find where you want approval.
And it's just the south and east sides of the square, correct?
What's that?
Just the south and the east sides of the square?
Yes. And again, how that's worked is the cones or barricades have gone in an angle, so as people approach the intersection, that's Sixth and Court. Doesn't use deviate block off, and then has to stop a block earlier, back up and turn around, very similar to bike nights, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Next up, need a drumroll for this one. Resolution 2507, authorizing competitive bids for the City of Harlem entrance sign project. Any updates on that one, Jane?
Same old, same old, just wrote on it.
This one's gonna work. This one's gonna be the one.
Yeah.
These plans and specs were emailed out to you as well. One primary change from the last two attempts were removing the solar requirement, which was, and feedback from some of the vendors was a reason they didn't bid this last time around. We did get a competitive bid two times ago, yet as you may recall, that was, that bidder did not provide a DB or disadvantaged business enterprise requirement. We got that removed. So looking to remove as many obstacles with, for contractors in this space with this funding source, and again, the primary hang up here has been funding. I stated before that I didn't believe I would come to you again to authorize this, yet I'll eat my words, and that based upon two vendors indicating they would bid if that solar requirement was removed. That's why I'm humble, as well as confident enough, I believe we could succeed with a bid this time around, as well as our Kirk and Michael vendor. And literally it's been with the DOT and us and our vendor, excuse me, our contractor engineer, Kirk and Michael. We've gotten, I don't know if this is a good thing, we've gotten quite proficient on updating the documents and dates, and we check the PDC, and we check the right away permit, and, but for those who are hearing it the first time, enough of the background, there are some paper copies here. We emailed out electronic documents as well, and in your, in your previous information. So the two locations, once again, these are welcome entrance signs, area number one, up here by the cursors, by the water tower, at Cyclone 59. Area number two is down the south curve coming into town by Van Deest. Those are the two locations, and we have not changed the spec at all. That's what the design is, and it has the solar requirement removed. Worked with HMU, thanks to Joe and Colburn, have been very responsive in what would take to get power there, and it's a very low power source, and be able to put that in force with an estimated cost of $1,500 or less to give the power there. So we have that path to yes as well with this, so appreciate that.
Did I read somewhere that the funding source deadline had to be extended?
Oh, yes.
Or am I thinking of something else?
This funding goes back to 2014.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, I bet I read that.
Patience and persistence.
Hey, motion on that, 2507?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson.
All right.
Second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's support, much as.
It's the last time.
Don't ask for me some lesson.
Yeah.
Next up, Resolution Number 2508, supporting the Shelby County proposed ordinance for the purpose of regulating and restricting the use of land for the transport of hazardous liquid through a hazardous liquid pipeline. Is that, did they have the reading today?
For supervisors? For supervisors, we've had this morning, and just a general discussion on this. The public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission of the county is Friday at 8 o'clock at the Oval Room. That's open to the public. If any of you as elected officials could be there, that would be wonderful. And the entire ordinance was in your packet, and this is being put in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider with a hopeful recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for this ordinance that would need to go through three meetings at the county. The, there's multiple, again, you don't have to look very far in the press, but to educate yourself, and one about COC pipelines. The primary purpose from a.
Never been there.
Called visitor entrance.
A county or city perspective is looking at safety as well as development impacts, which is what the, by having ordinances in place, it doesn't restrict them in the domain, but, them in the domain can still happen, yet not having an ordinance or guideline on the books, there's, you still have to comply with what those stipulations are. So in the ordinance, there are highlighted areas such as setbacks or distances to areas such as city limits. So any city limit within Shelby County, within two mile distance of city limit, they would approach on structures, but also development opportunities, how that may impact land values and tax base. A half a mile, and this is all stated in the many pages of, this will be reviewed Friday at the public hearing as well. Again, the two takeaways are impacts to development as well as ensuring public safety, and having guidelines in place will allow that to be enforced. And it will be countywide, and what is in front of you is simply a statement, is a resolution of support toward what that Planning and Zoning Commission in the county is looking at.
What time is that, Friday? You said 8?
Friday at 8:00 AM at the Oval Room, and tomorrow's.
Oval.
Oval, A-U-B-L-E. Right for the visitor entrance, you just go in.
Yes, many times.
Isn't it up a button now?
No, I thought, it is. I thought it was right by the visitor. You take a right, and it's the meeting room.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Visitor entrance, take a right, and it's the big.
Go to the admin office just off of Garfield.
Just walk in, somebody'll tell you. Just act like you're lost.
Next door up the hill from the ER.
Yeah.
Garfield 12th. Blood screening, old cafeteria maybe, if we go back.
I think it used to be the dialysis entrance.
All right, is there a motion for Resolution 2508?
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beelenberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, City Administrator's Report.
Passed along a few updates. Said I've been out of the office some, just attending some personal matters, but trying to keep things moving. Couple of project updates and other items to pass along. Airport met this morning with our monthly meeting. The tax improvement project was slow last week, yet they expect by the end of this week to have first page ready for pavement next. The base and subbase prepped this week for first four next week on one of the tax areas, but that project is going well. Just a little bit slower than anticipated. The catalyst grant at 601 Cork Street, the Jerry Henshine Building, as we've had extensions on that with the state, there's definitely been progress on that property. We met the property owner recently, and have set a mid-October walkthrough with our local building inspector. The target date and end date with the state catalyst grant is October 30th. The building owners assured us that should have no problem meeting that. I believe 50% of the painting's done. It's a lot of finish work at this point. Setting of, setting some plumbing fixtures, setting toilets, bathtubs, cabinets. This week all the utilities as well, Leachback was supposed to be replaced. Update on the catalyst grant, and if you drive by, you'll see there's been plenty of activity there the last number, last couple of months. Progress has been made. We targeted end of September, and with our status touch base, that's not being met, but we've been assured mid-October, and we have reached out to the state and kept them abreast as well. Anything we'd add to that, Jane? You used that in the meeting?
No, I think you covered it.
Was successful. Had recent notification, I should say, from Monogram Loves Kids Foundation. Been a great partner for the communities they operate in. Council member who works for that entity but doesn't work on the foundation side, yet had received notification for this most recent grant cycle for $6,575 for our library, and $5,000 towards our Pineapple Park Playground. So our various boards and commissions or directors will apply for those grants. They do a great job of staying on top of those regular ones, and to see those come to fruition is always great to see. It helps offset budgets as well as tax asking. Any help there is greatly appreciated. And the final two items I have to report on, as part of the public improvement project, as we're applying for CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, there is a survey going on, and it's the LMI, which stands for Low to Modern Income, and this was put out within the last week. We put it out on social media. Some of our news have picked it up. Thanks to our newspaper, they printed an article on the inside of today's paper. So really broadcast out on social media. This is, it's a confidential, really simple, three-question survey. It's not tied back to anyone's name, and it's simply a required step in this funding process to determine if we meet this threshold or not. There needs to be 485 respondents, and if, I believe it's over 60 or 70 just in a few days.
Yeah, 63 as of yesterday have responded. We just, we just posted it not too long ago, so, yeah.
So asking for the community to respond by September 30th, after that date is when they would then look to consider phone calling, and last resort would be an indoor door. That's the least desirable, and this is facilitated by our Council of Government, SWIPCO, that does these studies, and it says it's a required step. Just wanted to highlight, this was in your packet, this is what's out on social media. It's, there's a QR code that can be scanned. It's also this link, and this is how simple it is. There's, you type in your physical address, how many people live at that household, and if you're above or below, and hit submit.
Super simple.
60 seconds or less. We've had, there's been some questions and concern as to what's this being used for, and just on some of the social media, we've put some direct answers out there to alleviate those concerns or questions. And this will, this information, go in our vat, will then be used for the next two or three years for the other potential CDBG or for applications. They can be used for other utility improvements. This, we're specifically looking for additional assistance with our sewer lining project, is the background to it. Any comments or questions that maybe you've had?
What's the deadline for them to do this?
We want to achieve as much as we can with the online version by September 30th, and then eligible to as much as needed. Takes another month or six weeks after that date would be telephone and face to face, or, or I should say.
We do have paper copies up at City Hall. If, if you can't access, if you don't have a computer, you can go to the library. They have free computers there that you can use, or we can have, you know, paper copies that you can fill out and submit to.
In the chamber as well.
Yep.
They're readily available, and appreciate all our entities that have shared our Facebook posts, or newspaper, and even if, cascade that information. Always appreciate that. And then a last update, I provided you a written update on this, but just highlighted again. A year or two ago, we had looked at, we have a few departments that have some very valuable permanent part-time staff. Permanent part-time staff, or I refer to those team members as great utility players that can help fill gaps or staffing needs, and what was, the council looked at through our budget planning, you know, last year, the year before, was developing some type of time off benefit. Our permanent part-time staff don't receive any type of benefits, but the October 4th council meeting, two weeks from tonight, the staff has sat down and looked at how we might design that and recommend that to be put in place for, to not only recognize, but also would help retain, attract and retain some very valuable folks, and it would be a net zero, what I call a net zero impact, any tax asking or budget. We'll, we'll highlight that for you at the October 4th meeting, and have information out to you before that time. And with that, would you be happy to answer any questions or updates you have that you follow up on?
Downtown, the lights going around, do they get zapped or something? They may mention to that on the buildings?
Nothing I'm familiar with.
They're flashing and they're doing, is that, I know, is that city now, or is that?
That's the chamber and the building owners, but I can follow up on that. I've not heard of anything recent, but there's definitely been some, some weather and some lightning at various times. I'll follow up on that, Jane.
A little too much altering lights for Eric, just.
The district changing.
Where's your sleep?
I look tired. Anything else for Gene? Um, under my report, I don't have anything. We'll move on. I hope, you said Todd is not going to attend, not going to join us, right?
No. We're not able to.
Joe Ruischberg, HMU.
Hello, everyone. Mine's short and sweet too. Really, I've only got an update on one item. Yesterday morning, we had a meeting with, uh, the auditors that are doing our yearly audit. Just kind of went over the draft of that audit report. Uh, they found no, you know, no significant issues as far as going through with their audit. Should have had that full report. I guess I didn't actually ask the question, huh? Assuming they have that final, you know, full report that will be available by the end of the year, you know, a couple of weeks, you know, that we had that full report that would be available. It was just to review the draft, just to see if there was issues. So that is the only update I had. I don't know if you have any other questions, concerns?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Let y'all easy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Comments from the public?
Mayor, uh, next week is the annual League of Cities Conference. I don't believe any of you had signed up, but it's up in Waterloo this year, so Jane and I will be out Wednesday through Friday. Would, uh, next year is in Cedar Rapids. I believe it's coming back down to Cedar Rapids and the year after that it comes back to the western part of the state. I believe it's Sioux City. It's always held the third or fourth weekend, excuse me, third or fourth weekend, September each year. A few of you have attended, I make proportions, or one day. It's specifically designed for elected officials, more so than staff and to, um, hear a range of topics all the way from what's the latest, greatest tip and idea that a community is doing to updates on legislative changes to, um, projects that certain, um, cities have accomplished with a certain contractor, foreign engineer. Great two and a half days of networking and Jane and I will be at that next Wednesday, Thursday and Friday morning. Always available at the mailroom if there's something to come up.
I may request a reminder about a mixture shortly because I didn't forget about it. So I know for a first time, it would have been beneficial, but sometimes our schedules get a little busy.
With each MLA, which is the Municipal Leadership Academy, a few of you have attended those, there's usually three to four part series. That kicks off, um, December, January each year. RJ is a new team member and welcome to your first meeting. I've shared that with my first comment in the report, but great to have you join the elected official team. Then usually comes out in December, January with.